We started having our public hearing. It was running late.
We're running a little late.
We was waiting for everybody to get carried on.
I gotta call it downstairs. I gotta call it downstairs.
Well, we're just a couple minutes late, but we'll call the public hearing to order. This is Public Hearing for the Community Development Block Grant. Do we need any explanation on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, what we're doing is we're working with Cameron Plateau right now. The state of Virginia had the governor's request to open up some emergency funding for flood relief to try to get some relief to the counties experiencing the flood. Of course, we've not got a FEMA declaration yet, but what we're hoping to do is to make an application with them. We're still working on some options. We're limited in what we can apply for, but one thing we're working with the PSA on is going to be some permanent fixed mount generators for some of their pump stations to help with future events. And then communications was an issue, so we're working on some communication stuff as well. We were hopeful, originally we learned about this, to be able to help with some private bridges and things, but as we get further into funding, it's looked like that's not going to be a possibility to be able to get funding for it to help with. So it's kind of a moving target. Cameron Plateau is working with us on it. So we're here if anybody in the public has any comments or anything about this process.
At this time, we'll open up the public comment if anyone would like to make a comment on the Community Development Block Grant that we're looking at. Anyone for public comment? Also, if you'd like to call in on the public comment, you can call 276-333-0357. Again, that's 276-333-0357. It don't look like we have any public comment if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion that we adjourned the public comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Motion to adjourn.
Shelby made that motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I did.
You.
And Chris Segan did. No, closed it. It just, nobody was supposed to speak.
It's o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Bart, would you lead us in prayer?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Let's bow our heads. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we so humbly come before you again this evening, Lord. Lord, asking a special prayer upon our county, Lord, and Lord, just be with our Board of Supervisors members today, Lord, we just pray that you would give them wisdom, Lord, as they make decisions on the county's affairs, Lord. Lord, be with Rhonda, I pray that she feels better tonight, as well as all those others in the county that are sick and afflicted, Lord. Lord, be with us, all we pray. Amen.
Rhonda, you ladies pledge your allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we've got approval of the minutes. Want to do these two together or separately?
If there is no question about either one of them, I make a motion that we approve our regular meeting of February the 25th and our budget workshop of March 4th together. Does anybody have a question?
I don't think so. And I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second for approval of the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. And approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to call to your attention item 7D2 on page 2 on our agenda, the Stanley Buddy precinct public hearing. We scheduled that last month, so I think we can take that off. And we will have an item 8A, there was an agenda addendum that was left for you on your table. Under other business, it'd be the capital cost agreement for our court of abatement authority. And then lastly, an item 9A1, under personnel, all departments, including solid waste, I'd like to add in Commonwealth attorney to that, so.
All right. We have a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Second.
Which one did you say take off, Mr. Bart?
Oh, the item 7D2, Stanley Buddy precinct. We got that scheduled last month.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second for the approval of the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. And the consent agenda?
He is the sheriff, he'll have to do his.
He is not.
Oh, he had an early morning this morning, turned out of town on county business most today, and was just getting back a little bit before the meeting, so.
If there's no question, I make a motion that we approve A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I, because we've had them in our package to read, and I make a motion we approve all of them at one time.
Do I, we need a second before I make a comment? Or can I make a?
You can either way.
Can I make a comment? In reading over these, I was, I know last year I went through several meetings that I always brought attention to the rescue squad calls if it was a potential suicide attempt or DOA or what, but I was just shocked to read that these for the month of February for 28 days, that Clintwood Rescue Squad had two calls for attempted suicide, three calls for DOA. That's not counting structure fires, behavioral health, falls, chest pains, and then you go on down here to the, and then there was some diabetic calls, chest pains. You go on down to HACI, they had three DOA calls. That makes six. And then Sandy Ridge had one DOA call and one suicide attempt. And that was just so saddening that, that our citizens, or whatever the reason was for DOAs, that it was, that's just sad. We just, we all need to try, if it was something other than natural cause and having to go to their house to find them, if it's something else, we all just need to reach out and try to be kind and helpful and encourage help to our citizens in the county. It is somebody's son, daughter, mother, father, grandchild, or what. We just need to reach out. That just, that bothered me when I read that rescue report.
That's a very good point. I'd like to add too, the people that have to respond to these calls, our rescue squad members and fire department and law enforcement agencies throughout the county, it's tough on them. You know, I know it's hard on the families, but these, these people are also have a rough time with it. I'd like to thank them for all that they do.
Yes. And I will second Shelby's motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Now takes us down to public comment?
Yes, and here's the rules for public comment. Upon recognition by the chairman, the speaker shall address himself to the chairman, and if at the conclusion of his remarks, any member of the Board of Supervisors desires further information, the member will address the speaker only with permission of the chairman. Time limits, there shall be a time limit for each individual speaker of three minutes. A representative of a group may have up to five minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are not permitted to donate time to other speakers. No speaker's time shall be extended except by unanimous consent or a two-thirds vote of the board members present. Prohibited conduct, persons appearing before the board will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, use language which insults or demeans any person and/or when directed at a public official or employee when not related to his or her official duties. However, citizens have the right to comment on the performance, conduct, and qualifications of public figures, make frivolous statements, interrupt other speakers, or engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting, engage in behavior that intimidates others, address the board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, or affairs of the county.
Thank you. Anyone would like to step up for public comment? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Albert McPeak. I'm resident of the Willis District. I've addressed this board many times in the past in relation to some of my job duties. Currently, I'm a member of the Clintwood Rescue Squad. I'm also acting general manager of Dickinson County Ambulance Service at the time, and I'm teaching your EMT class across the hallway when I get done. I'm gonna let my co-speaker, Ms. McNutt, introduce herself.
I'm Elise McNutt. I own Dickinson County Ambulance Service.
I'm sure that this board just dreads seeing fire an EMS cab. Most of the time, we're here saying, folks, we need some money. Well, today, I'd like to introduce an idea to help fire an EMS, generate some of its own revenue, and not just come with a handout. EMS issues in Dickinson County primarily circle around lack of personnel, which we're trying to deal with, but also, of course, like I said, lack, lack of money. One of the revenue sources that an EMS agency can utilize is money made through interfacility transports. That's transport from one medical facility to another. Currently, and has been the practice for some several years, the EMS agencies have had, or in-county EMS agencies have had to compete with out-of-county EMS agencies for those very transports. So I'm here to request, and maybe start the discussion, that the board be interested in permitting ambulances and permitting operations within Dickinson County, primarily to compel our local medical facilities to call in-county agencies first for those lucrative transports. All too often, patients are waiting in emergency rooms for extended times for an ambulance to come from Wise County. Not only does that delay patient care, but that also, we're bleeding money. This county is getting, and its residents, and the health insurance for those residents are paying out-of-county providers for things that could be provided right here by our own people. I'm not here to advocate for any one particular agency in Dickinson County because we're all in the same boat. We're all in need of that revenue. We'd like your assistance in being able to ensure that we can collect money and not have to compete with out-of-county agencies. But Cannon County, Virginia, does have an ordinance on the books, which allows them to do that, and we'd like to maybe start the conversation as to how Dickinson County could follow suit. We're open to any questions.
You're asking for a resolution from the board?
An ordinance.
Yes, to basically permit which ambulances operate in Dickinson County and give preferential treatment to agencies which are already established in Dickinson County, so that we can keep our county tax dollars here.
I ask a question, Mr. Chair.
When they're in the emergency room down here, and I assume the nurses call the ambulance, or the doctor, right?
I'm sorry?
Do you have to be transported from the emergency room down here to Norton, let's say?
Correct.
Who do they, what's their, what's their protocol on that?
From my personal experience in years past, it's whoever the nurses want to call first.
Well, that doesn't seem hardly.
It's not fair. And this happened years ago with Clintwood Rescue Squad in particular. Clintwood Rescue Squad was staffing two crews, so that one crew could respond to 911 calls and one crew would be available to do those transports, and we could watch out-of-county agencies drive right down Main Street and go pick up the same patients that we were staffed and equipped for transport.
Well, is that, is that something that their hospital has a protocol on, that they're who they're supposed to call?
That I can't tell you.
We do have a, we have that. I have it in print in the office.
What does it say? Does it say?
In Dickinson County, a ballot says that Dickinson County Ambulance Service gets first call. Clintwood Rescue Squad gets the next call. If we don't have that ALS unit or BLS, whichever one they want, then they, they drop it down the list. There's, there's three or four on that list, and, but they're not going by that list. The nurses are, have been privy to these other, like, like Albert said, out-of-town ambulance services, you know, and, and here they come. And we, we're paying our people to sit there, you know, because we, we're not getting the calls. And we've worked, we have worked together for several, several years. If, if we don't have like an ALS available that night, then Albert makes sure that the rescue squad does. And that's how we've managed to, to have some coverage in town.
That's balance thing.
Yeah.
Why do they not follow balance of protocol?
That, that we can't answer for. But how many years ago, Nathan? Five, six years ago, Clintwood Rescue would staff two crews and the out-of-county agency would come in?
Yeah. I think it's pretty much got to do with who the nurses would call.
That, that just doesn't make sense. That don't feel fair to me.
Yeah, we're, we're asking that maybe the board could help us.
Well, we can't tell Billard what to do, but it seems to me like, what's the, what's the, Will, what's the?
Well, no, we're talking, we'd love to sit down and talk with them and, you know, look at some other ordinances and see if it'd be the board's pleasure, first of all, work something they have to bring to the board, because we want to try to help our in-county agencies, whether it be private or rescue squads all of a sudden, so.
I would suggest that we let Will and Murray work with them and see what we can do.
That, that's what we're asking for. We're asking for a way basically to keep our money here and help the people that are here.
I'm glad you brought that to our attention, because I didn't have any, have the idea of what they did. I'd, I'd rather but one day, since Clintwood take me out, if I'm down there sick and wait for Norton to come get me.
And Norton Rescue even comes over and does those trips. We, we need to keep our, we need to keep our money here with the agencies that are here.
Well, yeah, not only that, but it's a safety issue.
It is a safety issue, and it's a financial issue. If the agencies can bring more money in, we're less likely to come up here and ask you for money.
I understand, but I understand that, and that's good, but I don't understand why the nurses would do such a trick as that. I would call the one that was the closest and available, because when you're sitting there waiting, you got a heart attack and you have to wait, wanted to come from Norton or Wise, you need to get to the hospital as quick as possible. And how many horror stories have we heard about people sitting in the rest, in the emergency room down there for six, seven, two days for somebody to come get them?
Yeah, part, part of it is a transportation issue, and I think part of it, they've got some federal rules that govern interfacility transports, as far as making sure there's an accepting physician at the receiving hospital. But we can take care of the transportation part on our end here at Dickinson County.
Not trying to take it for the nurses, because I don't know, no nurse that works down there. I know a couple of other people in other departments, but not in the ER. Would those nurses be asking the patient when they are told, you know, we need to send you here or there, would they ask the patient, do you have a preference of who we call? Would the patients be doing some of that?
That may be a very reasonable thing to include in a resolution.
I think it's patient choice.
Patients should be given a choice. I'm not sure that they always are, is what I'm trying to articulate.
I would make a suggestion that we turn this over to Larry and Mr. Sturgill and maybe get with them and see what we can do.
We'd be glad to do that.
I would agree with that.
As far as their standpoint from the, from the ambulance service or the rescue squad, we want to work together.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Albert a question?
Yes.
You said McCannan County had an ordinance?
They do.
That dictates that their facilities have to use in-county?
Well, the ordinance says that, basically, they are calling an in-county agency or permitted agency.
They have designated areas for each ambulance service over there. It's sort of like a certificate of need. One ambulance service will have the lower end of the county, one will have the central, and then one will have the upper. And now, they've, they've grown their rescue squads so that they are, they are staffed well enough that they can take all the transports or transfers out of the county themselves. They don't have to call anybody else like they used to. So that's, you know, it's, it's only, I think, in my opinion, fair that Dickinson County do the same thing. Look at all these people, we, we have plenty. We, we have plenty.
So we have the capability of doing...
Between the most agencies in the county, we do have the capabilities.
What about when they transport one from the nursing home to the ER? Who do they call then?
Well, that's up to the nursing home staff, whether they call 911, or they call the ambulance service private number.
Well, that's another one that needs to be addressed, too.
Well, very possible.
Because they do...
But at least they're not calling an out-of-county agency. At least they're calling somebody from here.
And their patients do have a choice. It's listed on their face sheet, on their patient information sheet. It's listed. Their family choice or their choice, you know, if they're of sound mind, they can make their own choice. But most time in the ER, it's just wherever they can get an open bed. And of course, Ballard's going to address their facilities first.
I think all the boards in agreement to let, uh, Will, Larry look into this and, and see what we can come up with.
We'll, we'll, we'll schedule a time.
Appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Mr. Chairman, we have one on the line now.
Okay. Go ahead, whoever's on the line.
Uh, this is Jerry Tardo. I have a couple of things I wanted to mention. One of, of a resolution, uh, is, is, was given out, I think, to each board member and to county administrator, and it's basically calling for a study to be made of the effects of these cuts to Medicaid on the economy of Dixon County and probably the suburban area. And he's asking that, uh, Weldon Cooper Center and Virginia Tech Center for Economic and Community Engagement, that's, I, I think they do that without cost. I think it's a public service, or is... And I know that there's probably no one who's sponsoring this tonight or anything in the, so perhaps you'll think of that at least in the next, uh, the next meeting. And the other, the other thing I'll say is I have a background in working with benefit insurance, uh, lots and lots of things related to that. And there's some, some of the real high-ranking officials making statements about people, millions and millions of youth, millions and millions of people in this country way over 100 years old, drawing, uh, social security checks. And then they're, they had one person say, if they cut off all the social security checks, the people, that screamed, "Oh, be the fraudster," and all kinds of things. So they're going to go after social security. I mean, that sets it up for it. So there's so much concern and stuff, I couldn't possibly name it to you, but a lot of people have no idea what's going on. They're planning to cut the social security staff across the country 50%.
This is really, uh, in this considered political...
Well, it's not really, it's beyond politics.
He's not serious.
I think that each of you...
She's not campaigning for the office.
No, I'm not campaigning myself. They're attached in science and education, museums and art. If you like that, you're the, it's beyond politics. So I encourage you to find out what's going on in this country. CDC, Center of Diseases Silence.
Go ahead.
All right, so I'm Jeremy and so is Captain San George Rescue Squad. Want to thank each one of you pushing us towards filing a grant for a new ambulance. We have submitted that grant. I thank Larry Barton, everybody else that's helped with, uh, us getting through that grant cycle. That was, uh, it's pretty rough filling those things out as we're learning. I don't have an agenda here today with you, but I do have a request. We passed up a, well, we didn't pass it up, we started a, in a grant, an EPCR grant, that's for our vendor that does our call sheets, um, so we can move, move stuff to the state as well as to our billing services. We didn't complete that grant in enough time. On July 1st, all rescue squads need, are going to have to come out of pocket if they didn't receive the grant, to do the initial cost for the ESO vendor, as well as each year thereafter. What I'm here to ask is, uh, if you'd help us with the initial cost to getting that set up, unless another grant cycle for the EPCR comes around that I don't know about yet. And the cost for that is $2,735.20. I could pass this around to you, what that covers. Pass this.
Again, it's not, it's not, it's not technically due until July 1st. The sooner they receive it, the sooner they keep it going and active, without any interruptions.
Don't hang out? Mr. Chairman, I say something?
Well, they don't understand why didn't you complete it in time?
Okay, so we started into the grant cycle late, for one, and for all...
What do you mean you started in late? You knew this was coming, didn't you?
Well, when I opened it up, when I was told by ESO that there was a grant coming forward, or one was already open, that's when we opened up and went to check the grants for it. That's when we found the grant, and that's when we started filing for it. We got, I want to say halfway through it, but we did not complete it in time to, in order to submit that grant.
Ms. Moss under a 30-day thing next month, though.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is something the board can take into consideration based on your, uh, board rules of procedure, as far as if you want to add this back to the agenda next month, so.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Give us some time to, give everybody a copy of that and read it.
All right, I appreciate that. And again, thank you all for helping us through the last grant. We appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, Jerry? Did all the agencies have to do that?
I'm assuming so. I don't, yeah? Okay, yeah.
Did everybody else get?
No, we didn't get the grant in either. Yes, I did. And I'll tell you why, I was working on the grant for the truck and the cop. When you're running calls, I'm working on a grant, too. There's just none up there today.
Yeah, so we, we've been doing a lot as well. So we, we did get into that grant cycle pretty late into it. There was probably maybe a week or so left to go. We filled in as much information, and when we got to the more complicated stuffs, where we about got lost it. But trying to keep up with the grant and then our other duties, it just, it does, there's, I don't know what to say about that, but now, if that EPCR, I was told that it may roll back around again. I'm going to check with the Office of EMS. I was talking with the ESO today, and that was the draft they came up with. Actually, they came up with the original draft, where it was like over 3,000, but there was items in there that we didn't need. So, um, that's where we came up with this here. And, uh, but if another grant opens up, I'll bring it to your attention at the next meeting. Anything else?
Anything else?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm Larry Doode. I'm Troy Bartley, Haystack Rescue.
I think most of you know me, and I did look at that grant, and I figured I needed to apply for the grant for the truck first while they still had the grant program going. I was informed by the Office of EMS the day before I sent mine in, that there would be no more 80/20 grants. They said there would be 70/30 from now. And he said that's what mine would be. And we did apply for a grant for a truck and a cop. But, uh, on the ESO, I figured, well, I just have to eat that and try to pay it myself, because I hadn't asked you all for no help. And like I said, on time, when you're filling out one grant, it takes every minute you can spare. And, uh, I'm sure Jeremy realizes that now, and I know Nathan does. It's a big job to file that grant. Monday was the deadline, the 17th. I sent mine in on Saturday night, and I was told Ron got his in Sunday. So it takes time to do.
Is that grant a match?
It, on the ESO or on the ambulance? Yes. 70/30.
Okay.
And I will tell you this, I was telling Mr. Thacker back there before we even started, Striker is the cop that all of us, I think, pretty well use. Grant for a Striker cop is about $80,000. I went to Furno today and got a quote from them, $55,000. Where it's just a different brand, little bit different cop. But if I get the grant, that's probably what I'm going to go with, to try to save money. I went for a Re chassis on the ambulance instead of getting a new. I can get a Re chassis for $219,000. A new one was going to be over $350,000. And I had three quotes on them. And every one of them, that's basically the area that was act. Our trucks have not been wrecked, thank the Lord. And so the box is still in pretty good shape. And I figured we'd try a Re chassis this year. And I did put in for a gasoline motor, which I was told what you all was requesting. But, uh, I will tell you this, the two trucks, the old trucks I have, one of them is 14 years old, the other one is 15. They're both diesels. The motors have not been set as an engine oil cooler. One truck went bad. Is the only problem I've had with them. But they're Dodges, they're not Porsches. And now you can't get a Dodge. But, uh, you were talking, uh, Ms. Kowdler, about the deaths. I've had, I think, two this month already. And, uh, three in February, I think I went across the three there.
Sad.
It's, it's sad.
Sad.
The one I went on the other night, when I walked in, I'll tell you this, the patient had a pulse of 35, but it was going straight down. And I never did get nothing. It's hard when you're by yourself. And we call for help a lot of the time on account of that. Dixon County Ambulance Service, if they're in there, they will come and help us every time. That night, I had the transport attendant book general, I called Prater, and they sent an EMT to help me.
And three minutes is up.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Terry, for everything you did, we appreciate you. Hello, everybody. I've, I've missed you all, and I wasn't planning on saying anything, but, uh, there's some currently things going on with our fire department on Sandy Ridge. And, um, I'm afraid we're going to lose the department, whether it's the board or the state that makes that decision. I hate for us to lose Sandy Ridge Fire. I've put in 22 years up there, and I want the board to know that if some kind of decision comes down, that I'm willing to put my hat back in there to try to get things straightened out, and I've got a few people that be willing to help me with it. I just don't want to lose our department. It's going down, things are happening that shouldn't be happening, and members are leaving, and there's a reason behind that. And, and that's, you know, that's all I've got to say, is I'd just like to put my, my two cents back in there. When I was the chief up there, you didn't have any problems out of our department whatsoever. Now, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Again, the number to call is 276-333-0357, if you'd like to call in. Anyone else in the audience like to step up and make a public comment? I don't wear any bow and line, don't look like anybody else in the audience who ever motioned close public comment.
I'll make that motion, a close public comment. I'll second it.
Motion is second, close public comment, all in favor?
Aye.
As well. Next, we have Andy Rose with the food bank.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your opportunity to come up and speak with you all tonight. Just wanted to go through a few things I've learned here over my past two years as the director of the Dickinson County Food Bank, that, uh, maybe we're not the best at advertising what we do. So, I'm going to cover the qualifications, when we're open, and then, of course, beg for volunteers, so. Uh, at first, we have what we call our self-declaration of income. Uh, when you come in, we ask you some very simple questions. We ask your name, your address, how many people are living in the household, and then we get into qualifications. If you receive supplemental nutrition assistance program, temporary assistance for needy families, a single household that receives Medicaid, an individual that receives supplemental security income, if I'm going too fast, please raise a hand or something, I get excited. And if you receive a free reduced lunch at school, you qualify. If you do not qualify through those, we go through a monthly income. For a single household, if you receive $3,138 or less, you would qualify, and for each additional member in the household, it goes up approximately $1,100. So, we find a lot of ways to find, to get people food. Uh, food insecurity is a big thing in the county. It is non-discriminatory, it affects anyone, so we're here to resolve that. Currently, we are partnered with the Feeding Southwest Virginia, that's out of Abingdon. They are supplied out of Salem. We distribute approximately 450 to 500 boxes a month, uh, serving about 750 to 800 individuals in the county. If you receive, if you qualify through, uh, the supplemental, or excuse me, the, uh, self-declaration of income form, at Air Brick and Water Food Bank out on Route 72, you would also qualify for the pop-up distribution that occurs down at Clinchco, at the old Clinchco Elementary School lot, the first Wednesday of every month from 10 to 12. We are open every Tuesday from 8 to 12. We are located, the physical address is 1286 Browning Hollow. Air mailing address is 1280 Browning Hollow, Kara Faye Ramey. If anyone is not familiar with our location, we are about nine and a half out Route 72, Coburn Road, on the right, in that big warehouse. I just wanted to make sure if anyone has any food insecurity in their household, uh, get ahold of us, contact us through our Facebook page, uh, call DSS, we'll get you the food you need. And we're always welcome to volunteers. Like I said, we're up from 8 to 12. We're all volunteers out there, so, uh, if anybody would like to come out and help us, we're always looking forward to having some, uh, extra hands to help lighten the load. I will take 61 seconds of questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, Andy, I was out there with the commissioner's office when we dropped off that food, and it looked like you all was doing a fabulous job out there, very organized, very impressed.
Well, thank you. Hearing nothing else, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to new business. Proclamation, April Fair Housing Month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, what we have before you is a proclamation declaring that April, uh, 2025 is going to be Fair Housing Month in Dickinson County. Uh, what this is for, we, uh, through our project we're working on in Trammell, each year we have to have a different activity for, uh, fair housing, and, uh, this year we've chosen to make April, uh, Fair Housing Month, and we've got that proclamation before you. I'll answer any questions anyone has.
Any questions? I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the Fair Housing Act of April 11th, 1968, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States, and whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, and national, national origin. And whereas Dixon County reaffirms these protections against housing-related discrimination, and whereas the fair housing is a positive community good...
and whereas the fair housing is a positive community good, and whereas the month of April twenty twenty-five has been nationally declared as Fair Housing Month, now therefore it will be proclaimed by the Dixon County Board of Supervisors that the month of April twenty twenty-five be and is hereby designated by, as Fair Housing Month in the county of Dixon, Virginia.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pass this proclamation. As fair housing.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. All right. We have the, next is resolution, VDOT Route six thirty-seven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, what you have before you here in your packet is what was sent to us by VDOT. Mr. John Bolling, during the work they're doing on preparing for the roundabout, which I think is going out to bid in August, had realized that back in, when they finished the project in twenty sixteen, they had realigned some of the curves and done some work, went up six thirty-seven after the new school opened. They had realized that they failed to do some housekeeping work, the road realigned, and they need to abandon the section of some of those curves and kinda slide the road over. So what you have before you is just a resolution adopting those changes. And there's a map attached to that that shows the changes that they made. So, VDOT said this is just a housekeeping thing that was overlooked by them back in twenty sixteen, so.
So we just need to pass a motion to accept that?
Yes, ma'am.
Design it.
Yes, approve the resolution, adopt the resolution, so.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution from VDOT Route six thirty-seven, Rose Ridge, road project adjustments.
All second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. The DEQ water supply plan?
I'm looking, Mr. Baker, I think, was coming from the PSA, but he may not be able to make it tonight, so I'll share with you. Basically, back after the drought in two thousand one, two thousand two, the water supply planning program was created. And their goal was to have adequate and safe drinking water available to all Virginians. So what they're doing, each locality is required to adopt a water supply plan. And all of our localities in our area, of course, are part of the Big Sandy. And Cumberland Plateau has agreed to be the regional planning area representative for both Big Sandy and the Upper Tennessee Two, that some of our neighbors are part of. And what this is basically, they're looking ahead for the next five years to determine that each locality has adequate water supply. And of course, we're blessed here in Dickinson with the Flanagan, and of course, they have the John Flanagan Water Authority. You know, we foresee no issues with our water supplies, you know, in the foreseeable future. But there are localities that do have some concerns. But this is a new state regulation that we have to do, so before you in your board packet there, you have a resolution that we need to adopt tonight. And I'm asking that you all will consider adopting that. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Go ahead.
With the Cumberland Plateau, that's the region, this is a regional study?
It is, yes.
Does the county itself have to have its own study, or is it just a part of the region?
No, it's just part of the region. We'll participate in the regional, Cumberland Plateau will facilitate that, so.
Okay, so.
On behalf of the county, so.
Say Dickinson County is fine on water, or Russell County's not? That?
Then we're fine.
We're not gonna be affected?
We're not gonna be affected by that.
Okay.
They're looking at each individual county, even though they're working for all of us counties together to do the, to bid the facilitator, so.
Okay.
Yeah, comments or questions? Have a motion to?
I make a motion that we pass this resolution on the DEQ water supply plan.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Thank you.
Next, we have communities and schools?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the communities and schools, as each of you will recall, we had Brett Davis and Mike Sessler here last month with us. They'd done a presentation based on what they would like to do to provide some prevention services within our schools. And of course, at the same time, they shared some of the things they're currently doing in our schools. I think we all agree that they are an asset to us with the after-school programs and the additional programming they're providing. And of course, they came to us last week asking us to commit to ten thousand dollars of our opioid abatement authority funding, our direct distributions, to be paid to them annually for five years, so a total of fifty thousand dollars. And in turn, with that fifty thousand dollars that they're receiving, they're gonna be applying for a competitive grant. Of course, other counties are paying as well, but with all the localities paying, they're applying for nine hundred thousand dollars in competitive funding. And of course, this will enable them to continue providing the services they're providing. I know we had some concerns with Mr. Mullins from Behavioral Health and some duplicative services being provided, but Mr. Mullins has spoke with him, and Mr. Mullins followed up with me and said, you know, they have no issue working with community and schools, they're doing two different things. And so we're back before you tonight to consider this funding to them, so.
Everyone had a chance to read this?
Yes, it's a long one. Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Okay.
This ten thousand dollars you said comes from the opioid abatement?
Yes, ma'am.
Fund?
Yes.
So it doesn't come out of the general fund?
It does not come out of the general fund. These are funds that are segregated and can only be used for certain items. We have to meet the gold standard, and of course, we have followed up with the opioid abatement authority at the state level to verify that this does meet gold standard, and it does. And the other localities, of course, they've showed, you know, who have made the pledges, the other seven counties that are participating as well, so.
Well, I think it sounds like a good thing to me.
Think they're doing a good work in the county right now?
I see the buses come out my home, I think my niece goes to the, after the bell. Of course, I can't get nothing out of her. But I think we should do this. I'll make a motion that we do this.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second the motion, I think it's a good program also.
It is a good one. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're gonna move down to scheduling public hearings.
Mr. Chair, we got another payday that we added in there, it's the addition, addition for you here. We apologize for the late dish, and Ms. Cronkite got this to Ms. Lyle on this, at the, she was waiting, she'd been working with opioid abatement authority on a potential change overlooking over, but this is the exact same agreement that the IDA passed at their last meeting earlier this month. And this agreement between Dixon County Board of Supervisors, the Industrial Development Authority, and Southwest Properties, and it has to do with opioid abatement authority grant, it's over a two-year period, the one million seven hundred and nine thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars, which would be to construct the wellness center adjacent to the Wildwood Recovery Center. It basically lays out the responsibilities as far as, with the county and the IDA being responsible for the procurement, design, and, you know, the operation of being Southwest Properties, and it just kinda breaks all this down. And we, when we applied for this grant previously, we went through the same thing as far as, you know, who was who and why, and told that. As we follow up, as we get close to closing out the year one, moving to year two, then they required us to adopt this agreement again, so. I'll try to answer any questions anyone has on it.
On that, do we still have to, I guess, file a DEQ EPA?
We said follow up.
Still have a lot of them.
Depending on, depending on the amount of disturbance and things, we said follow those rules, so.
Anybody got any questions?
Is that the total cost to build the wellness center?
It'd be the cost to build, and of course, the original grant had the original budget with it, I don't think this has a break down. There is some operating money, there's some operating money in here and some equipment that goes into the.
So what we need, just a motion to approve the capital?
Make sure you confirm the agreement, yes, sir.
Cost agreement?
Yes.
I make that motion that we approve this cost cap for agreement. That's on our agenda for tonight.
I'll second. This is gonna be a good thing.
It is gonna be a good thing.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. All right, the one we skipped over, the public hearing, um, do we still need to do the public hearing for one?
Tax levies.
That's the one I talked about.
I skipped it, I apologize.
That's all right. You just in a hurry to get to that.
I was gonna finish, I lost it.
Okay. Schedule public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six tax levies. It's like we got a date for April the twenty-second, twenty twenty-five?
Next month.
At five thirty.
I make a motion that we set a public hearing for the fiscal year two twenty-five, two twenty-six tax levy at five thirty on April twenty-second, which is our regular meeting.
I'll second.
Is the motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Right, the second one has been stripped, has done the other business, now we're down to closed session. Or closed meeting, if you wanna take us into closed meeting.
Yeah.
Ms. Cottler, it's your job already.
I get it. I make a motion that we will go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one, A Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one. Personnel, then one, all departments, including solid waste and Commonwealth attorney.
I second the motion.
All right, is the motion is second, on the closed session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Yeah. I make a motion that whereas the Dickinson County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Dickinson County Board of Supervisors that a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Dickinson County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies and only such public businesses, business matters as identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the Dickinson County Board of Supervisors.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay.
We do a roll call vote on it. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Skyes?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Slus?
Ro- aye.
And I also... Supervisor comments. Mr. Hall, we want to start us off.
Oh, shoot.
Well... Our first way of need to see, do we have any matters coming out of closed session? Sorry. Okay, now Supervisor comments.
Now, I just had something on my mind for the last week or so. We're doing this resiliency study in the county now and I think a lot of people's participated in it. And a lot of times we focus on negative things in our community and our county and I think we need to start kind of focusing on the positive stuff. You know, there's a lot of positivity and good things in the county, so I think kind of get, get your mind in a positive kind of position and start thinking about all the good stuff that's here.
Good.
Skyes?
I just thank everybody that's come out. Everybody's patience for us when we're in closed session. Sometimes we don't know if we're going to be there short or long, but everything seems to be going good. Another member in my district, well, they've been two or three people in my district, has passed away and one is fairly close to my home. That's been a big worker in the community and, and stuff to remember his family. He's only had, found out that he had cancer five weeks ago and he's gone. And it's, it's sad. So remember that family. I got a family member that's traveling up in Kentucky for a doctor appointment on Friday. Remember that situation. And I'm glad rain and everything has held off and fires has not been reaching people's homes and things has been a little bit better on that. And then I've got a nephew that moved to our county from Florida as a new citizen to our state and county.
Will?
I really just like to thank everybody for coming out and those that listens also I like to thank them. And I'd like to say I had several requests for funds through the school system and I kind of divided because we have to kind of spread it around and I, I want everybody to understand that. But I know the kids from the vocational school are going for state competition and I like to wish them well and we got several going for competition. And I ordered strawberries from, I guess, is it the band that sells?
The band, they were good too.
And boy, they were the best I have ever got.
Me too.
They were delicious. And I let hurry know that they were, I text him a message and told him they were the best that we'd ever got. That's all I have to say.
Slus?
Those strawberries were very good. I want to congratulate the girls' basketball team for winning the conference, the Mountain Seven Conference and I also want to especially a congratulation to the scholastic academics where they won the state championship. I think this is their second time. And a particular young man, Daniel Greer, who was recognized for his intelligence in winning a certain field and I also want to, like Shelby, I'm proud of the welding where they're going to competition and also want to remind people that there's going to be a awakening up at the high school starting Friday the 28th and Saturday the 29th and the 30th at 7:00 PM. So I encourage all of you to go and, and hear different speakers and singing and so forth. And I thank God I make it, made it through this, this session and I feel some better. Thank you.
I'm glad you feel better.
All right, I echo the congratulations to all the students that's going to the competitions, that's winning the competitions.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
I would like to touch on a little bit about the flooding issue. We've, we're addressing what we can address legally as quickly as we can. We, we don't have the one road grader to work with and we've got one person to operate it and we've got one backhoe and he has to kind of switch back and forth between the backhoe and the road grader or the dump truck to haul gravel. We're doing the best we can to try to get to all the roads that we can. We're trying to get to the worst ones first and then kind of distribute it out between the five districts. And I think our truck shop is doing a, a good job of trying to address that. I know a lot of people don't understand the rules that we have to go by when we're distributing gravel. We, we've got a set guideline that we have to go by. If we don't, it's a crime and, and nobody wants to commit a crime, so we're not going to go outside the regulations that we have to follow. We've had a lot of forest fires. I want to thank the Department of Forestry and all the, a lot of people here today that fought them forest fires and climbing in mountains and carrying that equipment is not easy. It's hard and I've done it for, since I was 16 years old. I've been a part of it and I've seen what these people go through, the heat, the exhaustion, the hours, eating on the go. Sometimes while you're moving from one fire to another, you're swallowing a cold sandwich that you're supposed to had four hours ago. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for getting out here and protecting the structures and, and then our rescue squad people that respond to the emergencies. I responded with the Sheriff's Department. My last rotation that I worked with a gentleman that was very, very sick and there's no better sight than to see that ambulance come around that corner when you need them. So I want to thank all of you that's in, everybody in this room tonight just about it is, is part of either EMS or fire and I just can't thank you enough. And I know all the board members feel the same way because they've expressed it to me many times in our conversations. We just thank you from the bottom of our heart. Thank you for coming to this meeting and putting up, sitting here and listening to us for as long as you have tonight. I thank all the board members for being here, our county administrator and our lawyer and our clerk and our IT person, Adam. We couldn't do nothing without Adam. He keeps just all of our computers going and just thank everybody and thank Sheriff's Office for being here, Chad for staying late tonight.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else.
Appreciate him standing there. He could sit down.
Good having him sit down. All right, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Being here for us.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Take it.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.